Good evening. I'd like to call the order. This meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education, June 19th, 2014, 8:00 PM. Mr. Tepper, if you please, call roll.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Hamelgarn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Fruman.
Here. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, equal to God, liberty and justice for all.
The safety exits are located here in the front of the room, all the way in the back, and the two to the side here. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Uh-huh.
Second. Mr. Tepper.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Well, thank you all once again for coming to our work session, the discussion of facilities. I see mostly faces I recognize, so people coming back, thank you for continuing to come. I actually see a few new faces. I'm not sure I'm qualified to say they're new. I can't say I remember everybody that comes to every meeting, but I think there's some new ones. So, thank you for coming, welcome. The purpose of this evening's meeting is for Mr. Fox, who conducted a marketing survey, to present his final results. The last meeting, he provided preliminary results, and there's a little more detail this evening. Randy Smith, as you can see, is not with us, but he is available by phone, and I'm going to hook him in by telephone now. I don't need to dial nine?
No.
Hello?
Randy? Everybody's looking at you.
Hello, everybody?
We're just now going to hear from John Fox. John?
I'll probably spend most of my time up here, and I do it aloud voice. For those of you who were here last Monday, let me tell you what's going to be different. Last time, I really just had a lot of Word slides and sort of an executive summary of results that we had to date, and there's been a lot more tabulation and stuff since then. But what's really going to be different is I'm going to be covering in detail and tracking you through every question that was in the research, with some charts and graphs, and this will be a lot prettier and better looking than you got it, because you're going to be looking at charts and graphs, and I will explain them. And then I'm going to double back and do the executive summary at the end. First, cover the objectives and methodology. The objective overall was to secure feedback from the district residents on facilities issues and communication information, and to gauge the community intent to vote in favor of or against two facilities plan options for possible bond issue, and then get their reasons for these opinions. The two plans, and again, I encouraged the district to come up with measurable difference plans, and they certainly did. $173 million plan to totally renovate both high schools and the middle school, and replace the six current elementary schools with four larger, totally new elementary schools, closing to current schools to be determined, compared to a $98 million plan that would renovate both high schools, not totally. Renovate the middle school, renovate five of the six current elementary schools instead of having new ones, and build a totally new Wilson Elementary School. So, the big difference was that this plan was going to end up with four elementary schools, this plan was going to end up with the current six elementary schools, new, renovated. Also, a key objective is to determine awareness of and opinions on issues related to the plans, their relationship to current teaching trends, their financial implications, and a focus on having six renovated versus four elementary schools, which is really the key difference, and to analyze the feedback both overall and by demographics where appropriate. Actionability. Number one is to provide a go-no-go decision for placing a bond issue on the ballot in November 2014, and to determine which of the two options to pursue. But equally important to that is that if it is placed on a ballot, determine the best sales messages, positives to emphasize, negatives to address, and sources for information for pre-book marketing, PR, and other communications to help ensure its passage. This is marketing research, not just polling. So, I do a lot of marketing research, not at all related to schools, new product research, advertising research, and complete marketing background from when I was in college to every position I've ever held in the business world. This is a marketing research study. A key goal of the research is to let the Forest Hills community know that based on their opinions, the recommended plan is what they want, not just what the school board or administration wants. So, for those of you that participated in this, this is you telling us what you want, and hopefully, we will go with the plan that the people want. Specific issues that are researched, we looked at awareness of what's going on in general, what should be the top priority in the district, opinions on facilities, and this was great because there was a study done about six months ago. It focused a little bit on facilities, on some other stuff as well, but we have a couple of questions in there, we can literally compare trends versus six months ago, and it's very interesting what's moved in people's minds since really only six months ago. Find out the effectiveness of district communication programs and specific sources for information on the schools, reaction to possible facilities plan, bond issue in terms of voting and unaided reasons why. And this is really key, the word unaided, because what we do is we ask how strongly are you in favor or against, and then, in your own words, why. We then, after that, test level agreement on 12 facilities and financial weighted hypotheses that we came up with that might be reasons why you would be for or against it, just to sort of double-check things. Relative importance of 10 specific selling points that could be used in the communications plan, and also awareness of applied specific issues that could be used in the communications plan. And then interviewee down grant this across tabulation of the data. We conducted 500 completed telephone and online interviews between May 27th and June 6th. There were 333 telephone interviews and 167 online interviews from May 23rd to 30th. Now, this was interesting. On the first day, last went out, to put it online, with a goal of getting 167 interviews, we got 500. In the next six days, we got another 500, and there were literally more than 1,000 online surveys completed. I then went through those and randomly selected 167 to go with the 333 that were conducted by a telephone to get to 500. In both the online and the phone research, all participants were screened for being a resident of the district, a registered voter, and planning to vote in the November 2014 election. And this is really key, because we always want to avoid what we call order bias in a research study. Two plans, and their voting-related reason why questions were presented in different rotation every other interview. So, half the people saw the $173 million plan first, half the people saw the $98 million plan first. By the way, so the multi-part questions, where we went through 12 questions, or 10 questions, or eight questions, whatever, they were always presented in rotated order as well, to prevent order bias. Little bit of statistics for those of you who might remember this stuff from college or high school or whatever. Total sample error range is plus or minus 4.4 percent at the 95 percent confidence level. And just to give you some perspective, you know, a school district this size, national studies are done prior to elections with 400, 600 people, you had 500 in this district. So, this is a very good small error range, particularly representative of an area this size. This is a little bit of explanation of how this works. Suffice to say, if you're looking at a single question, you need nine points of difference for statistical significance between two variables. If you're comparing two questions in the study, you need six points. And I only talk about cross calculations of the data by demographics and other factors if there is some difference between, let's say, two demographic groups at the 95 percent confidence level. Okay, now, we're going to go through the survey in the exact order or approximate that the questions were asked. First question out of the box was, "How knowledgeable would you say you are regarding the Forest Hills school educational program and overall management and operation of the district?" I swear that these colors were your absolute forest green of your logo. We lose a little something in the projection. 42 percent said they were highly aware, 54 percent somewhat aware, only 4 percent admitted to be totally unaware of the educational programs and overall management and operation of the district. Now, is this good or bad? Next slide.
He's on slide 29.
Thank you.
Yeah, we jumped ahead to the slide.
Thanks.
Just to look at it demographically, the total sample was at 42 percent. You always see some differences by age, but this was fascinating to me. It was 42 percent among the total sample. It was only 29 percent among those aged 40 or less, and believe me, we didn't get a lot of under 30 people. We got mostly 31 to 40 people, we would assume have kids in school. 36 percent for age 71-plus, that's to be expected, and the strongest groups were the age 51, 41 to 52 percent. This is also to be expected, if they currently had kids in the Forest Hills schools, it was up to 49 percent, 42 percent if they previously had kids in school, and 29 percent if they never had kids in school. Next. Just to see how you compare to some other districts where the same type of research has been done, in the Cincinnati area and also in northeast Ohio. You were at 42, the strongest we've ever seen is 48. Let me tell you, they failed their levy. So, sometimes there's correlation between awareness and positive, and sometimes there's correlation between awareness and being negative. Wenton Woods as well, I mean, the stronger their awareness was, the more likely they were to vote against it because of the issue in that district. But you're right in there, kind of on the high side compared to some of the other districts.
Hey, let me ask you, did you say the higher awareness, the more they were likely to vote against it? Is that what you said?
In Wenton Woods, yes.
Okay.
Because they were aware of the academic standing issues.
Ah, okay. Otherwise, it seemed counterintuitive.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, in a lot of districts, it correlates positively. There wasn't much correlation here in Forest Hills between awareness and inclination of vote. Top school district priorities. We asked which one or two of the following issues do you think should be the top priorities for the Forest Hills schools to work on during the next few years? And we gave them five choices, and they could also mention some other issue. Improving the educational facilities for our students was the leader of 45 percent. You could mention two. Keeping up with the latest education, teaching, and learning, which came out of a facilities meeting, facilities committee meeting that we had here, we did something like that, 35 percent. Improving the district's performance, districts have academic standing at 31, including the financial district position at 28, and then being able to compete with surrounding school districts at 13. What this says, and this was really our first indication, that this district recognizes the need for improving facilities in the district, were leader of 45 percent. And in a lot of other districts, it's academic standing, one place like Wenton Woods that would be a lot higher, and even in some other districts where there was good academic standing that's still higher, but clearly, the most significant difference between improving the education facilities and everything else with that number priority. We then had some questions that we could compare to the 2013 research, which I believe was done in December, so really, six months or less old. In general, do you think the Forest Hills local school district buildings and classrooms are, and we read them these choices, good facilities that need no major improvements, out of a facility that needs some updating and no rebuilding, poor facilities that need to be replaced, or you do not have enough information about this to form an opinion? This was interesting because, again, we're seeing that the people recognize the need for facilities improvements, because between December and June, it went from 14 percent to 24 percent saying poor facilities that need to be replaced. 47 to 53 percent inadequate, and you lost a lot of people who said they didn't have enough information. So, people got more information, and I believe during this time was when it was declared by the state of Ohio that eight out of nine of your facilities need, what was the exact language they used? Major worth updating. I've got one on a future question. Again, that decree by the OFCC, the state of Ohio, happened between the December research and this research, and we think those show results in this question. Another one to be able to compare from the 2013 research, compare to other nearby public school districts, if you say the appearance and physical condition of the Forest Hills local school district buildings are better, about the same, or not as good, or you don't know. There were two different questions. One was on condition, and one was on appearance, but be that as it may, better dropped from either 21 or 31 to 11 between December and now. Not as good rose from either 12 or 17 to 31. So, again, evidence that whatever's happened in the last six months has gotten through to the public, and they recognize the need for improving facilities. They had a very specific question, and again, came out of the meeting that we had with the facilities committee, really trying to tie facilities eventually to having the latest in education trends. And we had a number of questions on that later as well. But in your opinion, how do the Forest Hills district school districts compare to some other nearby public school districts in terms of offering the latest in education, teaching, and learning? Now, again, we asked about appearance and condition, and it was not as strong as this, but 47 percent say it's better, 32 percent about the same, 11 percent not as good, jumping up to 21 percent for age 40 or younger, and 11 percent don't know, jumping up to 19 percent at their age 71-plus. So, again, just go back to the previous slide for a second? So, yeah, that's one. So, only 11 percent felt that the appearance and physical condition was better than nearby districts. And then on the next slide, 47 percent feel that you offer the latest in education, teaching, and learning, that it's better than other districts. So, file this away as a point that really needs to be driven home in terms of the communication programs, if you're going to put this on the ballot, that you need to let the public know that you're not necessarily better, and you do need new facilities to get you to that level, particularly in the STEM, statistics, technology, engineering, math, right? Science. Still in those areas. Where do you get most of your information regarding the Forest Hills schools? This was an unaided question on the phone research, and these were listed in the online research. We allowed them up to two responses. The Forest Hills Journal and Community Press is still the leading information source, and 38 percent, it was 48 percent if they were aged 61-plus, but only 25 percent if they had kids in schools. Friends, relatives, and word mouth, and might, children and students were the next level of 24 to 26 percent, and then it drops down to teacher's school and 40 school visits, et cetera. The Enquirer was 11 percent, but up to 21 percent on the oldest group. E electronic online newsletters information was at 10 percent, but increases to 23 percent if they had kids in school. So, e-newsletters were equal to the Forest Hills community, Forest Hills Journal, if they had kids in school. Other social media, website seven, Facebook five, the magazine mail, I assume, was down to 4 percent, e-vests down to 4 percent. Clearly, this is still a way to reach people, particularly the older people, who are critical in passing through. All right, now, we get into the two plans, as they were presented, again, in a different rotated order each interview. So, this was read to the people on the phone as many times as they wanted to hear it, and if they needed some parts repeated, we repeated again, and was listed in the online study. So, we said, "We are evaluating two different options for improvement facilities, and options to totally renovate both high schools and the middle school, and replace the current six elementary schools with four larger, totally new elementary schools, closing to current schools to be determined. The total cost is $173 million." And we always include this in the interview. What does this mean to me? Well, what it means to the average citizen is a property tax increase of approximately $233 per year on every $100,000 of a home's market value. Now, this was a big key difference between the higher-cost plan and the lower-cost plan. Because of the dollar amount, there's a state rebate of 15 percent, or approximately $24 million that could be available to possibly lower the tax burden longer term. And then we always give sort of an or-else factor. This would result in operational savings of approximately $1 million per year, would require some redistricting, but if it were not to pass this, the or-else, this would reduce approximately $600,000 to $1 million per year out of the operating budget for repairs and maintenance, perhaps necessitating a tax levy that would also increase property taxes. So, another key difference, though, in this plan, in addition to the rate rebate, is the operational savings that we mentioned, consistent with having brand-new schools, those just renovated schools. This is the key question in the study. This is the one that has been predictable in other districts, and really, the combination of the first two, if you add them together, 40 percent were in favor of a higher-cost plan, 16 percent strongly in favor compared to 54 percent against it, including 32 percent strongly against. Give you some perspective on this, next. On this higher-cost plan, there were some significant demographic skews, and in fact, more significant for this plan than for the lower-cost plan, which was 90 percent. If you look at age, it was 40 percent total in favor among the total sample, 60 percent if they were aged 40 or less, 51 percent of age 41 to 50, drops down to 32 percent if they were aged 51-plus. And this was 31 to 33 percent in each of the 51 to 60, 61 to 70, and 71-plus group. 61-plus probably represents 60 percent of your district, so, you know, if these people have been, if only a third of them are going to vote in favor, you're going to have a hard time passing something like this. Differences between phone and online are really indigenous of the differences between the samples, the online having much more younger people, the phone having many more older people. Male, female, statistically equal. Kids in the schools, 48 percent. So, you didn't even get to 50 percent for this option among people who currently have kids in schools. So, there's a skew, a little bit more in favor of if you're highly educated and then invisible as well.
Thank you, John. Could you say again? It kind of went by Tony and me. We think we heard you, but we'd like to hear it again. The age, sort of the older people, what percentage is that in this?
Well, in my experience, empty nesters represent 60 percent of a typical school district. Now, they could be 50, they could be 60, they could be...
We heard you, I guess. We're still shocked.
Yeah. And you can, you know, you can look at census data and those sorts of things, but typically speaking, people stay here. This is the kind of district where they're able to stay in their homes, or move to other types of homes that are still in the district. But the majority of people in the district don't have kids in the school, and some of them are younger as well. Okay?
Okay.
All right, next slide. Okay, this is a question that we didn't have at the meeting last Monday night. This is the open-ended question of why do you say you would be, you would strongly in favor, somewhat in favor, strongly against, or somewhat against this particular plan, the higher-cost plan? The way to read these charts is the darker striped bars are a net, or a sum, of whatever is below them for the most part. So, these four items, modern technology, updated technology, HVAC updates needed, buildings are old, need updates and improvements, and needs renovated, needs to be done, all roll up, unduplicated into this 23 percent that are need-related. So, the number-one category of unaided reasons why they would be in favor of the higher-cost plan have to do with the recognition of need, something needs to be done. 11 percent said something community-related, 6 percent good for property values, 3 percent need to attract more people to the community, 2 percent schools make the community. 8 percent mentioned something specific about Wilson, Wilson needs to be renovated, too crowded. 8 percent said prefer fewer schools, meaning the four versus the six, need to close, consolidate two elementary schools, they like the idea of redistricting. Next slide. 7 percent said something education-related, 4 percent education is top priority, 3 percent children deserve the best available. 6 percent said something tax or financial-related, saves money, cost savings, state government assistance. Again, I'm only showing responses to 2 percent that were mentioned. 6 percent said something about the status quo, and believe it or not, five of those 6 percent said, "I just like keeping the two high schools." Then some general comments, "I support the schools, I have children and grandchildren in the schools, this is the best option." 17 percent didn't know why they were in favor of this, but they were. And we gave them a chance, "Are you sure? What would you like to say?" So, if you can go back just to the previous slide, you know, the only point right here that is really sort of indigenous to the higher-cost plan is prefer fewer schools. All of these other things tended to be said about both plans, whether it's the higher-cost or lower-cost plan, but 8 percent did pick up on fewer schools, no, it's something that they like. And the rest of these things are, again, fairly general reasons, need-related, etc. I did send to Dr. Jackson today an Excel file of the verbatims of every response to this question from both facilities plans, from all 1,000 online studies. So, if you really want to look and see the passion of people in terms of how they feel for or against, you've got a lot of reading to do.
It's still downloading, no.
It's an Excel file. All right, next, next. Okay, I showed some of these last week. These are just examples, verbatims, actually, all the, yeah, the online portion, just some reasons why they would be strongly in favor. And again, I tried to take examples of different reasons. Makes uniform improvements district-wide, our buildings in poor shape compared to other districts, we need better facilities for the schools to be fine with me, but I don't have to deal with redistricting, potentially older, we do not stand to say in Forest Hills that there aren't serious improvements, it's on, need to invest in the future, the bond cost is reasonable, low enough for schools to attract new families to the community, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, just some examples. I made it reasons why they were against the higher-cost plan. And again, in every district I see, it's always what's coming out of my pocketbook that tends to be the main reason why people are against these, more so than education-related reasons. Although, it's interesting, because the status quo, now, 23 percent, this was a negative for the higher-cost plan, and on the flip side, it was a positive for the lower-cost plan. So, cost-related, 26 percent, including 15 percent, it costs too much, too expensive, we need better money management and financial decision, reduce the expenses, save money, cut costs of the budget. 25 percent, something tax or personal-related, I don't want additional property taxes, I can't afford, I want to fix the income. Again, I'm only showing this one, 2 percent that were mentioned. Then 23 percent on the status quo point, all of these were under, 8 percent keep the, they want to keep all the elementary schools, they like neighborhood schools, they'd like to walk the elementary school, redistricting is too disruptive, smaller elementary schools are important, no need to consolidate, high schools do not need to be combined. We didn't tell them that high schools would want to be combined, but there's still 2 percent of the people that are, honestly, keep their mind on that subject. Okay, next page. 19 percent said something about, "I prefer a less extensive plan." 8 percent, renovations are not needed, it's okay if they do with the current. Middle school doesn't need updating. Too much at once, do it a little bit at a time. Some schools do not need renovation. This is too bold, these are over-the-top ideas, all rolling up in that 19 percent. So, that's still up there with the other categories as well. 12 percent said, "I prefer renovation." 7 percent said, "Need smaller classes, concerned about overcrowding." 5 percent need more information. 3 percent, quality education is more important facilities. And only 5 percent didn't know why they were negative. 17 percent didn't know why they were positive. And on the next slide, just some examples why they're strongly against it. Not happy about raising taxes, too expensive, I like six smaller elementaries, closing day school means redistricting, closing low-income schools greatly increases the distance, my property taxes are too high, et cetera. Doesn't address our need, renovation is much more cost-effective. Okay, now, the lower-cost plan. An option is to renovate both high schools and the middle school, renovate five of the six elementary schools, and build a totally new Wilson Elementary, total cost of $98 million. Same statement, except this is $132 per year on every $100,000 of a home's value instead of $233. And where the other one had significant operational cost savings, we did mention there was no... there was no significant operational cost savings associated with this. This would result in no change to current configuration of the elementary schools. And again, the ORL factor, same thing if it were not to pass this, you'd spend approximately $600,000 to $1 million out of the operating budget for repairs, maintenance, etc. The other one had 40% total in favor, this has 59% total in favor. 32% somewhat in favor, 27% strongly. 34% against, 15% somewhat, 90% strongly. And as I mentioned earlier, the demographic skews on this are not nearly as great as they were on the higher-class plan. Male, female, virtually even. By age, age 50 or less, 64% said 59 overall. It dropped down to 50 for some reason for this middle-aged group, and then back up to 61%. So even the older people in the district who typically don't vote in favor of school-related bond issues and tax levies have, above average, been the people who are older than them. Phone and online, absolutely even, 60 and 59%. A little bit higher if they currently have kids in four or two of the schools, a little bit higher if they were hired more highly educated, a little bit higher in these, Zips 45255 and 45244 and 45230. But what you notice here that you didn't see on the other one is that every one of these demographic groups is 50% or higher, whereas the other ones you had, you know, the older age group was down to 32% in favor.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Out of curiosity, why did you group those zip codes like you did?
Because, go back.
Did you already tell us then? I'm sorry if you didn't.
No, no, no. You mean, why did I combine these two of this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because they were probably 62 and 64, so they, the two of them, each one was significantly higher than the other one. So I will send, in fact, I will send all of the data tables to Dr. Jackson, you can pour through these. And see all the different internals and the cross...
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because then in the, going back to strongly or somewhat in favor of a higher-cost plan by cross tabs, there's 45255 and 45230, but 44's not even in there.
Right. Because I'm only showing significant differences.
Okay.
Statistic is...
All right.
Okay. All right. Next. This is the strongly... Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry, this is just strongly. Thank you. I'm trying to figure out why I had this in here. Strongly in favor, yeah. 27% for the total sample. Male, female, fairly similar age, 40 or less, 37% compared to the older groups. So again, when you get the strongly in favor, you see sort of the age skew, you see a little bit strongly for the online interview, you see the expected skew for kids in schools versus previously versus never, and you see a stronger skew for education. That's why I put it, the last one didn't have that much correlation to this one actually. Okay, here's the open-ended question. Why do you say you would be strongly or somewhat in favor of the lower-cost plan? Number-one reason, again, is need-related, a higher level than for the other one. 18% needs renovating, 11% buildings are old, HVAC updated, three roll, nothing, 32%. Tax-financial-related, 18%, 7% less expensive, 5% costing reasonable, cost-effective, 3% additional tax is reasonable. So again, tax and financial being a positive in this case. 17% mentioning something specific to Wilson, I think it was 8% in the other one. 11% of the status quo, which you remember was a negative for the higher-cost plan, like keeping two high schools, keeps all existing schools, likes keeps the current school configuration. Next slide. More general things, education-related, education is a top priority, community-related, have children, grandchildren, support the school, this is the best option, more practical option, better chance to pass the bond issue levy. Then you should think very specifically of one plan, don't know was 12% of those. Next page. And again, some typical reasons why they were in favor of the lower-cost plan. There is no large change for students, and the schools are not being torn down, causing havoc, more cost-effective, old buildings are a real replacement, no air conditioning, I love the configuration of the district review. And some people wrote paragraphs that are even longer as you go through this, they have... Good schools attract good people, sort of a general comment. I know the poor quality of these facilities deserves the current school configuration, these costs are just pretty, and that sort of sums it all up. Reasons why they were against the lower-cost plan, 22% did say they preferred an even less extensive plan. Renovations are not needed, okay, may do with current. Some schools don't need renovations, middle school doesn't need upgrading, too bold, over-the-top idea, so even on the lower-cost option, we've got a fair amount of people saying they prefer less extensive. Related to that is costs, better money management, financial decisions needed, cost too much, too expensive, have lower salaries instead of the tax increase, reduce expenses and budget cuts, because it has no operational cost saving, waste of money, all rolling up to 21%. Then you come to the personal tax-related, don't want additional property taxes, prefer other options, not a property tax, on a fixed income. But all three of these would be statistically equal in terms of categories, 22, 21, and 20 for these various unaided reasons. Then it drops down to 9% saying they prefer the more extensive plan. Prefer major renovations instead of just the Band-Aid, prefer rebuild instead of renovation, replace more of the schools instead of renovating, rolling up to 90%. 4% renovate all the schools instead of any new ones, need to pick not long-term, it's not a long-term solution, need a better solution, and this was also, well, quality education, more quality facilities. Combine the two high schools, 3% need more information, 11% zip. And again, some examples of reasons why, next slide. Some examples of why they were strongly against the lower-cost plan, does not address the long-term replacement cycle for other buildings, does not reduce operating costs, increase the disparity of facilities in the district, too expensive, I would like to consolidate grade schools, middle and high schools. This option has already failed, you have to find money somewhere in the property tax, they are fine, and the schools are fine, not the building that needs a child, waste of money is still a long-term. So I mean, there are people that are going to vote against anything, whether it's $173 million, $98 million, or $2 million. And that's what you see in a lot of this. Next. Now here's how these numbers compare in terms of total in favor, total against, to some other schools. And there's some really important stuff that I really want to emphasize. The higher-cost plan, 40% total in favor, the lower-cost plan, 59%. The history of how all of this work began for me, I live in the Wyoming School District, and going back to 1998, I started doing this on a volunteer basis in Wyoming, and then eventually realized that I could take it to other school districts. I know every district I go to says, well, we're not Wyoming, and I understand that. Every time we did a study in Wyoming, there were even two or two before this, the voting number came in within one or two percentage points of where the research came in, usually in the high 50s, low 60s for operating, for building, high school in 1998, etc., etc., etc.
So were you unsuccessful in your capital campaign in 2009?
I recommended that they don't go ahead, because that was the first time we'd ever seen them.
Oh, so they didn't even go ahead?
No.
Okay.
Not yet, okay, not that.
Okay, got it.
In January of 2009, in the absolute middle of the recession, Wyoming did a research study for a new middle school. And when it came in at 43% in favor after having high 50s and low 60s from the previous one, recommended going against it. They waited two and a half years, and actually did two studies in 2011. This was the second. The first one was to look at various options for the middle school, and we got a winner out of that one, and then took it to this, and got 74% in favor. And I'd never seen them go that high. And I said to the board and the administration, now I know this is going to pass, but it's never going to get 74%. And I was right, it got 73%. Absolutely amazing. Milford was the first district that did outside of Wyoming. They got 57% in favor of their operating levy in 2012. They went in the presidential election in November of 2012, realized they were taking a risk then, and they literally lost by 300 votes out of 21,000 for this $4 million operating levy. Admittedly, they did not have a full-time communications or PR person or anybody, they were sharing somebody with another district, and I don't know if they got overconfident, but they didn't realize who was going to come out and vote in the presidential election. But they went back in May and got, I think, 60%, 50 or 60% and passed this, so close to that. These two districts, I did studies over the last couple of years, and those numbers were so low, recommended not going ahead. But the caution flag comes up here and here. Dover, I did a study in January, 56% in favor, this was for a new high school. Dover is a small town about 30 miles south of Camden. High school's been there since 1917 or something like that. They got 56% in the research, this was a combination phone and online study, similar years. They went to the polls in May, and it lost, it won 45%. So you do have to take a lot of these numbers with a grain of salt, amongst people put their money where their mouth is in the voting booth. Madison was even worse for an operating levy, and that was an online-only study. And I've always cautioned districts against doing online-only studies, because you tend to only hear from younger people with kids in schools, and you don't hear from the older people more likely to vote against it. 65% were in favor, and they lost by like 31% in favor on an operating levy. Chabrin Falls, I just did these, this study, theirs was very similar to yours, they were looking at two different options. One was for combining their two, their elementary, their intermediate school into one, and the other was for keeping two schools, and similar years to the status quo, keeping the two schools won, and they're going to be going to the polls in November, assuming this option. So that was similar to yours. But again, you know, you're at 59% for the lower-cost plan. I will say this, I think I used this term, this term, this money, this is not a slam dunk, and you really do need to take into account a lot of your caveats, including having a full-time PR person behind this campaign, and again, telling the people, this is what you wanted, and that's why I would assume you would vote that plan. Another wild card coming up here in a second, in that slide. We actually asked them directly, which of the two facilities plans do you prefer the most? And 56% preferred the lower-cost plan, and 17% said they preferred the higher-cost plan. 17% said I didn't like either. Now that doesn't mean that only 17% are going to vote against this, but those are, those are some of the people, you know, who didn't like this plan at all as well, thought it was too much, too little, needed more, needed less, whatever, so keep a solid, you know, 17, you know, a sixth of your district that's not going to vote in favor of any of them. And again, there are some... Here, all of these were 50% in the overall, I don't know if that's... Next slide. Okay. After those unaided questions on why you would vote for or against, we then take them through a whole battery of questions, testing some hypotheses, having to do with attitudes, having to do with potential selling points for the bond issue, etc. These in the table, agree strongly, agree somewhat, have no opinion, disagree somewhat or disagree strongly, please tell me how strongly you agree or disagree with the following statements, and they were 12 of them. These are ranked by the total agree strongly or somewhat, which is sort of dark agreement or light agreement. So the strongest agreement was that the excellence of the four or two of the schools contributes to higher property values in the district. Good sell-in point. That 88% agreed. 73% agree that regardless of various construction options, something needs to be done to improve facilities. So if they hadn't thought about this before, we'd get them over the head with this, and they'd say, yeah, something needs to be done. 73% agree, only 16% disagree. 63% say the board will be responsible, and why is they spending tax dollars on behalf of the schools and students? This is a good barometer. And I'll show you later how that compares to some of the other districts. Better school facilities will improve the student's academic performance under the sell-in point. 62% agree, 30% disagree. Doesn't matter if you eliminated fewer, or had fewer schools, the student teacher ratios in class, if the student-teacher ratios and class size remain the same. 57% agree that, 32% disagree. Again, that would be more of an issue if you have a higher cost value. This is one we ask all the time in every one of these district studies. If the bond issue passes, I'll pay higher property taxes, but get more than what I put into the taxes out of my home when I sell it. And a lot of times, this flips the other way, people don't believe they didn't get that money out. Here, 53% agree compared to 32% disagree. Next slide, please. An absolute direct question on the difference between a higher-cost plan and a lower-cost plan, two of them in fact. The district should keep six elementary schools and avoid redistricting. 52% agree, 27% disagree, so it's twice as many agreeants disagree. You did get a lot of millipede in this question. The district should keep six elementary schools, not four, even if all but one are renovated and not brand-new. 27, 52% in favor, agree, 25%, and that's twice as many agreeants disagree. Now here's the wild card. This is the first time we have brought this up in the entire study. Any plan needs all-day kindergarten, even at an additional cost, to ensure the district attracts new families long-term. 51% agree, 30% disagree. So kind of filed that away, because that was not included in either of the plans, and it might be. Then we drop down to ones where there's more disagreement. And again, this is sort of really a positive in favor, doing something. Current Forest Hills schools meet the students' needs for space, safety, security, climate and comfort, energy efficiency and technology. 28% agree somewhat, only 12% agree strongly, so 40% agree, 52% disagree. Forest Hills residents have been taxed enough and will not support any more taxes, even for education. Another question where in other districts you've seen a lot of agreement. Here, only 32% agree, 52% disagree, so education is important, don't vote for. And Forest Hills schools should have a plan improving all the schools at once instead of stages, no matter what the cost. Only 24% agree, and 62% disagree on that. So again, sort of confirming that they were ready to spend less money. Next slide. This is just some cross-decisions by specific demographic groups that have above-average agreement or agree strongly, and nothing that is about it. Current facility needs, the age 61-plus agrees more because they're not having a guaranteed facility, etc. Next slide. Here's a comparison versus some other districts. And again, it's districts, and it's also time, heavy to do with the recession. Residents have been taxed enough even for education. For example, in Wyoming, this was 43%, and we told them to hold off, and it dropped down to 31%, and we told them to go ahead. Been as high as 60% in Southwest, which is Harrison, Ohio, and you're down to 36%, which is in the right end of the sum of the other districts. Board will spend tax dollars wisely, you're a little bit above average compared to the other districts. You'll recoup the tax increase when you sell the home, sell your home, other than Wyoming in 2011, you've got the highest figure on that. So you've got people that really believe that they can get their money back when the tax increases... Better schools will, even with the tax increase, will be good for property values. Better facilities will improve academic performance, you're stronger than any of the districts that will be tested for that question. Next slide. Okay, now we're looking at the selling points. Following this list of possible reasons for voting in favor of a bond issue for either of the proposed school construction options, please state your opinion on whether these statements are very important, somewhat important, not too important, or not at all important as a reason for people to vote in favor of the bond issue. So here, we're not asking them, do you agree or disagree with this? We're asking them, kind of put yourself in other shoes, is this going to sell your district as a reason for having a tax increase for new facilities? So we're looking at very important or somewhat important here. Facility plan is necessary for Forest Hills to keep up with the latest in teaching learning, particularly in the STEM areas. 50% very important, 35% somewhat important. New or renovated Forest Hills schools are needed for the long-term future of the district to ensure the next generation... to ensure the next generation has adequate facilities. This is typically, in other districts, the one that's rated the highest in terms of importance. It's fairly similar, fairly. Then you drop down a little bit. If the bond issue fails, the district will require sizable operating budget increases, maintenance and repair, including future operating values for tax increases, sort of any ORS factor, drop down to 33% better than 40, 74% total. Current elementary and high school buildings are inadequate in terms of space, security, safety, climate comfort, et cetera. 73%. 72% of the state of Ohio has determined that eight or nine schools in the district have serious needs for renovation or replacement. So again, you could consider these up to be the most important of these reasons so far. These are kind of the next level. Next slide, please. And drop down a little bit more. Without, we will approve buildings, which will not be attractive to families to move into the district. 32% very important, 37% at the Forest Hills. Forest Hills school facilities are not improved, home values will decline, not quite as important. This is an opportunity for the district to receive a state rebate of approximately 15% to assist in making facilities plans with more total renovation and some brand-new schools again, only for the higher-cost plan. 29% said very important. 26% very important for consolidation of schools will create cost savings and energy and other operational efficiency. And then 21% if they're a renovator in new Forest Hills district schools, the performance of students will improve. So the stuff on the first page is really key for your PR plan or communications plan as you go to market this and hopefully pass this on issue. Final series of questions on the demographics. Please tell me how aware you were before today of each of the following factors related to schools using a scale of totally unaware, somewhat aware, or highly aware. And again, these were some other sort of selling points that could be used in communications. That the high schools and elementary schools were built 37 to 55 years ago. 59% said highly aware, 17% totally unaware. Remember earlier when we asked them, how aware are you of things in general? Only 4% said totally unaware. The STEM education trend requiring improved learning space and technology, the question wouldn't align with the data that they're now at. 54% are highly aware. And again, if somebody is not highly aware, I consider it an opportunity. So you've got about half of your district that really isn't strongly aware of any of these. The Bureau of OCC determined that eight or nine schools have serious needs for renovation replacement. The district spends less per student than the state average in pure districts in Hamilton County. And we had a 30% cut in state funding and receive less state funding than 2,700, more than 50% of students that are at least not highly aware of these issues. And then finally, here's your participation in the research. We typically get this, 60% females, 40% males. Now, the good news is, there were, with a sample size of 500, we could look at statistical differences between females and males. And I think it's important to look at that because there are some educational areas where the females are more aware, have stronger opinions. Next slide. Age, good bell curve, if you will, 42% over age 61, 22% 51 to 60. And again, it might, Julie, it might not be 60% over age 60, but it is 60% without kids in schools. Higher. You had 35% underage. Next slide. Education, you're a very highly educated district, 39% have graduate school or degree, and over 70, over three-quarters are at least college graduates. Slide. Marital status, 85% married. Children, 61% have no children age 18 or under. Now, again, 18 or under, you can have kids that aren't in school. But again, that's the number that we tend to see. We've got 52 to 74% range in other districts where researchers can have either via phone or combined phone. Next slide. Of those that did have children, 194 of the 500, 82% said they currently have children in the Forest Hills schools, which represents 32% of the total sample. So 68% of the sample did not have children currently in school. This compares to 16 to 36% in other districts. Next slide. Have you ever had children in schools? Looking at those without children, 71% said yes. And this results in 80% of the total sample currently or ever having had children, and that compared to 60 to 79%. So you do have kind of the high end of people having children in the schools. But again, fairly average, and 60% of the sample after, no children at all, if you remember. 31% ever had children in private parochial schools. And where this cross had made a difference, I mentioned it. There are a number of previous districts where I've done this, where if somebody had children in private parochial schools, they were much more likely to vote against something. Didn't quite see that here, so that's a little. Next slide. Here's where it came from in terms of the area that we gave them. Next slide. Absolute equal among the three zip codes, 32, 33, and 34%. How long have you been in the Forest Hills School District? You've got a lot of longtime people, so again, testimony to the fact that people stay here. You do have a lot of empty nesters, older people, 55% maybe 20 more years. Okay, just to kind of summarize where we are. When I gave this presentation last Monday, I didn't have anything in writing with any recommendations. But now, taking all of this research and all of these findings, there will be some overall conclusions and indicated action. Major conclusions from the research. Slide 10, Ray. As noted in the preliminary presentation, the special school will be being on June 9th. I'm referring to this as being cautiously optimistic in the results of the research, with the community clearly preferring the lower-cost plan with six elementary schools over the higher-cost plan with four elementary schools. Again, recapping the numbers, 59% in favor of the lower-cost plan, 27% strongly, compared to 40% for the higher-cost plan, and 16%. Now, follow-up question comparing the two, 56% perform the lower-cost plan, 17% perform the higher-cost plan, and 70% not. Both the volunteered reasons for voting intent and the specific hypotheses tested in the research demonstrate clearly a recognized need for improvement in the district's facilities, including increased knowledge of this need since a research study from about six months ago, and a preference for six elementary schools instead of four, in general desiring not to change the current configuration of the schools. Positive voting intent for the lower-cost plan is relatively stable across all demographics. On the positive side, there seem to be no major negatives, at least for the lower-cost plan that's being proposed, including some of the questions on tax and financial issues that have been red flags in research in other districts. However, this could be a function of the above-average income in Forest Hills. The caution and the cautious optimism comes from really two factors. Number one, you should be extremely cautious if the higher-cost plan is still under consideration. Far less than 50% in favor of the higher-cost plan with its price disadvantages, new schools, lower ongoing operating costs, should that plan still be under consideration. And again, as I mentioned, the fact that other districts in the recent past have had positive research results in terms of voting intent, but lost their bond issue or tax update options. The strongest selling points for the plan are needed to improve facilities for the latest in education trends, STEM, and for students' long-term future, and the state's determination that eight of the nine districts have serious needs. There are some awareness gaps for education-related issues in general, particularly for some points related to operations of the district on both the revenue and spending side. And there's positive response to the idea of all-day kindergarten, which makes this an area that should be considered in the plan if it is not cost-prohibitive. And I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't know how many million that would add to the 98, and you, of course, said, we can't go over 107 million because, because we're limited to 9% of the assessed value of the property in the district, which takes us to 107 million. So I don't know. Can you do all-day kindergarten for less than $8, $9 million? Don't know. You're one of the 17% don't know. We can build some facilities for it, we can't offer it. This was the wild card in the study, clearly. And it was not included in either of the, of the plans we laid them out. It was that one question, but it did get some positive. Indicated action. These findings in conjunction with two other Northeast Ohio districts, positive research results but negative voting results point towards proceeding with caution and with strong marketing and get-out-to-vote efforts, particularly among younger voters. The Forest Hills school facilities plan is to be placed on the ballot. And when I talked to Dover after the last debate, they said, you know, we just didn't get the right people out to vote. I think they had 17% of the entire district being voted in the election. That depends to happen in May, you're going in November, people out to vote. And I'm not saying keep the older people in hump, I mean, they get a right to vote also. You need to get, you need to get younger people out. You need to get the message to older people so they are in favor of this. If a plan is placed on the ballot, it should be the lower-cost option with the possibility of all-day kindergarten, perhaps considering additional research on this latter seven. You're not sure about all-day kindergarten, I mean, we could do something quickly online, even among your constituents, quickly and relatively inexpensively, if you want to research the market and see how they put on all-day kindergarten, maybe influence the cost of that. In order to pass a bond issue, this is critical, it will take a full-time district-wide PR effort to communicate, particularly in older households not currently involved with the school, the needs of this project, its long-term benefits, fiscally responsible steps that have already been taken in the district, and the potential consequences to taxpayers should the bond issue fail. For perspective, if 60% of the district consists of empty nesters without students in the school, 45% of these must vote in favor, along with 60% of parents of students representing 40% of the voters, to achieve 51% in favor of the bond issue. Do the math, it works. So to the extent that you can get more than 60% of parents of students, you need less than 45% of those who are empty nesters. It's a balancing act, and you need to get both groups out there and voting in favor. The research didn't exceed these figures, but only for the lower-cost plan. However, comparing research and election results from some other districts shows a drop-off in positive intent once one enters the voting pool. Most important, consistent with the research objective of proposing a plan that is what the community has told the district it wants. Again, this is what you want, not what they want. Forest Hills needs to follow the research planning and go only with some variation of the lower-cost plan. This could possibly include all-day kindergarten, but the higher-cost plan should not be forced on the voting public unless perhaps it's implemented in the city. Now, we didn't, again, test that as well in terms of, well, it's a $173 million plan, you could spend $100 million this year and $73 million in five years or whatever. But that would really be the only way that I could even think about recommending something for the higher-cost plan. That really concludes what I wanted to present tonight. There's a much more detailed executive summary that literally tracks through every question in any words in the final report, and I will open up any questions.
Dallas, are we putting the survey up online?
I'm going.
Survey, I'm sorry, the summary.
Yes, I'm gonna, we're gonna put the final result summary that John sent to me today, and we'll get that online tomorrow, or as quickly as we can tomorrow.
Great. Questions for John? If we wanted to test all-day kindergarten in some manner, you said relatively quickly. I don't know if you appreciate the time factors that we're on.
Like July 27th is the date that you have to submit?
Is that right? July 27th?
29th. I mean, I think we had to have, that's why I moved our meeting to the 21st, so we could get it there.
That's the resolution to proceed.
Yeah, that's not the legwork required even to, but the resolutions we talked about the last meeting would include that, so.
So we could consider resolutions of necessity with some number for all-day kindergarten, and then maybe talk to John about testing something about for, for support on that.
I think that was the numbers that were talked about was?
98, 103.
98, 103, correct.
I mean, the good news is, if you put something online and send out an email blast, you'll get 500 responses in a couple of days. So I mean, that's how quickly we can at least, you know, get an answer. I mean, you can do this over a weekend. Just a question of what do you want to test? You know, and again, if it's a short, you know, three or four-question survey, even better.
John, I don't know if this is a fair question, but I guess, based on, like Wyoming, for example, where you put something out and put something out again, and in that interim period, there was education going on in the community. Obviously, the economy changed as well. It seems to me, when I thought the FALN study was going to be the only study we did, I was not in favor of doing it before we had the OFCC findings, because I thought it would be more meaningful if we had the OFCC findings first, and then we went out with the FALN study, because we could educate at the same time. What we learned from doing it the way we did it, because now we have your study, is that between that study, there's that study, then there's OFCC, then there's your study. We have educated the community based on the OFCC, because the pre-OFCC study in your study shows we did. So, and then there's the Wyoming that became more positive because of time and economy and whatever, and more education, hopefully.
It was mostly economy.
Okay. But I just wonder, and I think I know what you're gonna say, 40% is way too low to ever think you're gonna change those people's mind, or to make that significantly higher. But it seems to me that there could be momentum in education if we had more time.
So you're still saying for the higher-cost plan?
Maybe not that exact plan, but a more bold plan than just renovations and one new building. And I may be a lone wolf in this regard, but I'm still that wolf, so.
That's what the Enquirer said.
Do you know I don't need that anymore? I've been running for a while. Yeah, that's funny.
You know, I mean, it's interesting. You've got 40, and you've got 59. And 59, you know, if that lower-cost plan came in at 53, I'd be sitting here telling you probably not to go ahead. So I mean, 59 is right on the border of acceptance, particularly given what we just saw happen in some of these other districts. So I just don't see how you're ever gonna change people's minds now. Again, here's one thing I'll give you. If we had just put the higher-cost plan out there and not had something to compare it to, maybe you might have gotten a little bit higher number, but I don't think you would have gotten 59.
Yeah, I guess I think that anytime you put two plans out there, not anytime, I mean, you're the expert, I'm certainly a low expert, I'm not even a novice. But it seems to me that if you put two plans out there, one significantly higher than the other, and the other sounds pretty good, most people are gonna go for the lower, which I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's.
Well, the lower end, people are so resistant to change. I mean, when we, when we did this in Wyoming, we gave them three options for the middle school, and they all cost about the same. Tear it down and build new, tear half of it down and build half of it new, or keep it the way it is and renovate. And I think it was, you know, 30%, 40%, 65%.
Right. And it's a, it's a double-edged sword, because it indicates to me that people are generally happy, which is great. It's a good thing that people are generally happy. But I'm just concerned that we're not really looking forward to the next generation, we're just sort of placating for now. It just, it still concerns me.
I mean, some use the word Band-Aid.
I should be having this conversation with these guys probably in like you.
Well, though, I think the discussion with John, who surveyed the community, is a good discussion to have. I think these are good questions.
And again, it's, there's a number of factors in there. The resistance to change, I think, is a key one. You certainly heard people say they didn't like redistricting, they didn't like this. Now, maybe you can come up with a plan that builds new all six schools, but does it over 10 years? I mean, I don't know. I mean, there's, again, we haven't tested that, but that was sort of the caveat I put there at the end. If you're going to consider the higher-cost plan, you can't do it all at once.
Let me ask you a question that I think is similar, but a little bit different than what Julie asked you. We've presently got, from your survey, 59% a cautious optimism in favor of the lower-cost plan that maintains the existing building configuration. the lower-cost plan that maintains the existing building configuration. If we don't go forward with anything now, because certainly, you wouldn't suggest we go forward with the higher-cost plan at all, right? So, the alternative, then, is to do nothing, and hope that we then can go out, educate the community, and not just move 40 percent up, but take from the 59 percent that either like it because it's cheaper, like it because it maintains the existing building configuration, or like it for some combination of those reasons. Can you tell from the survey, the results that you've done, whether we could actually move not just the needle from 40 percent up, but the people that currently want the lower cost and the existing building configuration? Would we be reasonably able to move them to the higher-cost plan?
But I would also say, and how long would that take? Because it's not gonna happen by July, so how long would it take?
And again, going back to Wyoming, you know, they had 43 percent in favor, and two and a half years later, they had 73 percent in favor. It took two and a half years of getting out of the teeth of the recession to do that. I would really have to, I mean, you'd probably have to look at those unaided reason why questions, I mean, the people who say that the, you know, for tax and financial reasons, they're gonna vote against, you're never gonna get them, no matter what. You'd really have to look at that, at the comparison between those two unaided reason why questions to see. But, you know, again, are you giving them what they want? Now, if you, if you, your decision is to not do anything this November, then you probably should test at least among your constituents, you know, if you want to achieve that quickly, the plan that you will go out with, because otherwise you're going out with something you haven't tested. I don't know how long it would take, but you have started to educate them on at least the need portion, that portion they understand.
Right. What changed the 14 to 24 percent was merely the recognition of the need, not what they wanted.
Right, exactly, exactly. But, you know, then you would also need to educate them on the true benefits of new versus renovated, and show them why an extra $100
Per $100,000.
Per $100,000 is worth it to them. And again, it could be the long-term future point. Find some other districts that did it one way versus the other way and regret doing it, the Band-Aid way, as opposed to the tear down and build new way. But yeah, you're not gonna do that between now and November.
Other questions for John? Thank you.
An observation that I had, that I was concerned about, was when I looked at the high-cost plan, comparing the phone interview responses to the online interview responses. From a statistical analysis standpoint, that was one that was, there was a major, a gross differential between the online and the phone. Most of the rest of them, as you pointed out earlier, like, for example, in the lower-cost plan, it was 59.
Right.
Whereas in the higher-cost plan, you had 53 percent for online versus 33 phone, which I assume, I take phones, that that was randomly selected and not opt-in, which the online was opt-in. It makes me feel like the 40 percent may be overstated because of the number of online interviews that were disproportionately in favor.
Yeah.
But that is something that we're probably gonna, I would assume, that we're not gonna still consider the high-price plan based on the data. I guess at this point, that's irrelevant.
Ooh, Randy?
You use the term "high-price plan"? I think it'd be more fair to use it as a higher-cost plan.
Yeah.
ER, like Procter, right, Randy?
Pretty good.
Yeah, and again, the difference, at least for that one, is this was a function of age, you know? There certainly were more older people in the phone research than the online.
This is more of a comment for all of us rather than John, but he can hear it too. I guess, so it's just something that's been gnawing at me a little bit through this whole process, and I am so grateful that we've had discussions. That was a big hurdle for me, and we've had those, so I'm glad we've had discussions. But we've gone to the community, and we've spent all this time going to the community, and I have to, I have to say that I think almost our biggest salespeople, kind of a crap way maybe to put it, but the people that are gonna promote the plan the best for us are teachers and our administrators. And I just feel that that's something that we have not really focused on too much. I've heard from several teachers, several administrators, some folks in central office, and they want a bolder plan, and the renovated plan, and keep things as it is, but they're uncomfortable speaking of, because it's a tricky situation. I mean, you're talking against, or in opposition maybe to, sort of, where the wave seems to be going, and your boss as well. And I'm not saying Dallas is retaliatory, man, I just don't assume that, it's just uncomfortable. I mean, we've all had those sorts of situations where we may not completely agree with the tide, and where it looks like things are going. And I'm just concerned that we don't have a true reflection of what's going on in the hearts and minds of teachers and administrators.
Julie, may I add quickly, because since you brought my name up quickly? Under no way in any situation have I ever said to any staff member or anyone that I'm in favor of one plan or another, ever. So I kind of resent that. Secondly, the fact that we have an issue that we have to address, and that an issue to address is our facilities. We have kicked the can down the road, as you have said so many times, and we need to, again, to address that. And that's the issue that I think is before us. It's not whether or not we're looking at, you know, the administration wants one plan or another. I mean, there are a lot of factors here. So, with that said, I just wanted to address that.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't, and I maybe didn't say it as archly as I could have, but I thought I indicated that, I meant this in no way negative toward you, Dallas, but the plan that was proposed a year ago was, in my mind, similar but different from this. This is a more enhanced version, there are more renovations with this one, but I don't think that it's... I think there's been a feeling that that was the way, it was hoped that it would go. And I'm not saying that you've, I would never say that, I don't even believe it, I would never, I would never say that, I don't believe it, that there's been any threat or anything like that, but I do think that there are people that have talked to certain people and are afraid to talk to other people because it may be unpopular, or deemed unpopular. And I just, I don't know that we as a board have explored that enough.
All right. Julie, may I please?
Sure.
What John did is he surveyed our voters.
Right.
And I'm willing to assume, just for sake of discussion, that each and every single one of our educators and administrators wants something different, whatever it is. It doesn't matter, because what we've got to rely on is the results of the survey, and the results of the survey tell us that the $173 million plan cannot pass in November. So what we're really looking at is, do we go forward with a $98 million renovating plan, which I think is a meaningful plan, I don't think it's just something a little bit more than the other. I think it's a meaningful plan, and I spent a good part of today, practically half the day, with Joe Kunkel going over his scope of work at all nine buildings, so I have a good feel for what he's doing, and it's a lot. But what we really have to decide isn't what our educators want, but what our voters will support, and whether we have a need that we think we need to address now, or which we can push down the road in hopes that we can then convert what is presently 40 percent to something in excess of 50 percent, while not alienating the 59 percent that are already in support of the $98 million plan. And to me, that's just really a dangerous thing to do. We've all committed, and I'm not telling you that I think that this is going to be a drop, what was your word, a no-brainer?
Slam dunk.
A slam dunk. It's not. The term that John used was cautiously optimistic. But we got cautiously optimistic on this plan, and we don't have anything on the other.
Right. I agree with a lot of what you said, Jim, I do. I just think, I disagree, though, that what our educators think, and what they believe they're in the buildings every day, they're with the kids every day, they know better than any of us, except for maybe Bob Dillwood, the condition of our facilities. And I just think that's a piece that we've missed, and I don't know how valuable it is to you, I just, I mean, over the last couple of days, I've had several communications, over the last several months, I've had more than several. And I just feel that that's something we've sort of ignored, really, and that's a little troubling to me.
So what do you propose?
Julie, can I?
I don't have a proposal right now. And I also have to say that, you know, because the more expensive plan has a 40 percent support rate, doesn't mean we have to do one or the other, we can do something different. We don't have to go with one or the other. We could do part of the 40 percent, or the more costly plan.
How?
I mean, that's, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating, and I'm saying that we're not stuck with one or the other.
No, I understand, but we've gotten, just, Rick, you know this better than the rest of us. Tell me if I misstate what I think legally our restrictions are. We're capped at $107 million because of the 9 percent of assessed value, unless we do an OFCC-approved plan.
Right.
The OFCC-approved plan that we've looked at, one with four new elementaries, that meaningfully addresses the two high schools and the middle school, also to OFCC standards, is $173 million. If we go ahead with a plan that meets those OFCC standards and then don't do all of it, what we've really done, I think, is manipulated the $107 million cap in a way that I'm not sure, I'm not sure the board would pass scrutiny, were the, would it be the Department of Taxation that would look at it? I don't know.
In order to make above $107
If we're going above $107 million, it's gotta be an OFCC plan. That's 173, we know what that costs. To do less than that plan, knowing we're not gonna do the full plan, go and ask our community for $135 million, when we sold to the OFCC a $173 million plan, what have we really done? We've manipulated the $107 million cap, haven't we?
I don't really think that means manipulated the cap.
We're capped at $107 million by law, unless we do an OFCC-approved plan. The plan that we've been looking at, the plan that OFCC looked at
We would have to approve a, OFCC, the board would have to approve a resolution to enter the OFCC, and to, the plan would be the OFCC $173 million plan. Also, part of that is, is that you don't have to do it all at one time, that's factual, and, but the board would have to pass a resolution to enter the OFCC program at a $173 million plan. That's 100% factual.
Could you refresh me, and I think Randy wanted to say something, could you refresh me on how much a new elementary is under OFCC standards?
Twenty-two.
Okay. I'm not advocating this, so, audience, don't gasp and talk about me, but what I, what about the, like, the possibility of a phased-in approach as a potential of, like, four new elementaries now, and leave the high schools till later? Or, I mean, there's different things we could talk about. If, you know, if everyone else is, let's renovate, I still don't buy renovate to new. I think renovate, and Jim, you spent more time with Joe than any of us, but what I saw on the one renovation plan was Air Elementary, that is an open classroom configuration, same as Sherwood. What I saw were walls, and I may be making this too simplistic, and a slanted roof. And I don't see 21st century learning, I don't see going into the next generation of students. I think it's maybe making it look a little more modern, maybe making it look a little newer, but really, it's the same thing we have. It's not proactive in moving forward.
We've got different needs at different buildings. And there's less being spent at Air and Sherwood, and for instance, more being spent at Maddox and Summit, because they have different needs. If you look at Anderson and Turpin, we're spending roughly 80 percent of what the OFCC recommended in those buildings anyhow. Anderson, I think they recommended 33, and under Joe's proposal, it's 25, and at Turpin, I think that number was 29?
That's 22.
Twenty, what's that?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-seven, twenty-two.
And under Joe's plan, it's 22, so, I mean, what is that? Roughly 80 percent of the OFCC spend at the two high schools? To go ahead and do the elementaries without addressing the needs at the high schools, I mean, you know, Anderson had raw sewage in the hallways.
I'm fully aware of it. I was in the building when it happened, three days in a row.
Yeah, I mean, not addressing the high schools is a problem.
I'm not, I'm just saying that as an example. And one other thing that I've been thinking about are, and again, this is no reflection on Joe, Joe seems like a qualified, great guy, but you have been saying over and over again that we need to have figures verified, and that that happens all the time in construction. Have we done anything in that regard yet? How far are we along that?
Well, you know the answer to that question. We have not had...
But I don't think, you and I had that conversation, but I don't know if the Corso's been privy to that, or Tony's been privy to that, or Randy on the phone's been privy to that, so I just think we all, we're making a huge decision here. It could be the hugest decision that's come around in Forest Hills, even huger than Nagel, in my opinion, although that was pretty big. So I just think we need to be prepared, we need to turn over every stone, we need to vet everything, we're still working on it, we still have them on.
Well, we've got a resolution of necessity, that doesn't tie us into anything, we're gonna need to consider that. I think we can all agree that, at least for now, the higher-cost plan is off the table, correct?
I agree, based on the data, it would make no sense to move forward with that.
And is there any dispute on that? Is anybody proposing that we move forward with a higher-cost plan that John Fox just told us has no likelihood of success in November? Anyone?
Well, the fact with that is, we cannot proceed with resolutions with that in mind as well, without something else happening. So, I mean, just, we can't move forward with the resolutions that are required
I understand.
Because of other details that we don't have.
I understand that, but I mean, I don't think anybody here, unless I'm hearing something differently, is suggesting that we move forward with 173. The question is, is do we move forward at all? Is that right?
I'd like to say something director commented Julie made a couple of minutes ago. You, at a previous meeting, you had mentioned some of the thoughts of, I think you mentioned administration, the teachers, and I spent some time in the last month having confidential conversations with various people, some administration, some of them teachers, some in the teacher association leadership. And, yeah, there was an interest in doing more than what we're doing now, but when it came down to do nothing or move ahead, not one person felt like the right thing to do was to not move ahead and do something, especially with the high schools. So, that to me tells, well, to me, we need to move forward. So, that to me tells, well, to me, we need to move forward with something rather than do nothing, and I think, as we said, the $173 million plan has, maybe not zero, but virtually zero chance of success. So, that leaves us with pretty much one option at this point.
Well, go ahead, Tony.
No, I was, to take that a step further, Randy, I would want, in order for us to do something, not just something, we can't just characterize it as, let's do something, to get beyond the Band-Aid, or, I would like to see Dallas, or Joe, or somebody, you know, maybe in our next meeting, guarantee that the renovate-to-new $98 million deal is, it's not just a Band-Aid. And, again, this is not going item by item over all that stuff, but this is what you're gonna get, this is what it looks like. It's not, you're not gonna walk into the building and think, wow, this is all the same as it has been. I would like to hear that it's gonna absolutely take care of that. I would like to hear that there's not gonna be any more trailers. I'd like to hear that we can have 21st century learning areas in these buildings that we're going in and that we're renovating. And that's what I wanna hear, and if we can have that, I have been in some renovate-to-new areas that look spectacular, so I do look at it as more than a Band-Aid. I did come into this wanting the Big Bang and something bigger in brand-new buildings. But I can do the math, I can, I believe when studies are done, what the results are, what we should be looking at. I don't believe that we can wait because of the factors of all the stuff that we're facing in the next couple of years. If we miss this opportunity, we're going to be four years, six years, seven years out, and then it's gonna be 25 years since we started talking about facilities with nothing having been moved or having been done. And the last thing, and Rick, this is for you, and you do not have to answer it right now, but I've heard this so many times.
Thank you.
Don't you love these questions? I'm gonna give you a chance to do some work. I've heard so many times that we can't maintain nine buildings, period. I've heard it from a bunch of different areas, it's not been one, it's been all over. We can't maintain nine buildings, we can't maintain nine buildings, we can't maintain nine buildings. Well, if we do this plan, we're gonna have nine almost-new, renovated-to-new, in great shape buildings, now we're gonna have to maintain nine buildings. Is that indeed the fact? Can we not maintain nine buildings? Why can't we maintain nine buildings? If they're renovated-to-new, how much are we gonna have to spend on, you know, permanent improvements and summer projects for the first X number of years? And, you know, all that kind of stuff. And then, the last thought I have when I think about all this is, is I look at Turpin High School, Forest Hills, the old Forest Hills Junior School, which is now Mercer, Air Elementary School, Sherwood Elementary School, 20th Century Learning Areas, right? That's what they were built to be, open classrooms, wide open, and it was almost the next day that they were putting in furniture and slideable walls and, you know, trying to block it all back in because that was here and then that was gone. And I have absolute faith in our community, absolute faith in our teaching staff and our administrative team, that if we present them with something that is bold and beautiful and that they can feel awesome about when they walk in it the next day when it's finished, and they can feel excited about it as they see it happening, that they're gonna come out of it, they're gonna teach, they're gonna teach hard. This is still a place teachers wanna come to, it's not a place, it's where they still wanna come. You know, teachers wanna get jobs here in Forest Hills. We have our challenges, but if you read the paper and you look around, everybody has their challenges right now in their own different ways. So, then, the last part of my lecture here would be that we need to get past this because clearly in the study, this is our biggest issue, but right behind it, we do have educational things that need to be addressed. We do have people issues, I believe, that need to be addressed. And I'm not talking about who gets hired and who gets fired, but I'm talking about morale and staff and programs that we're doing and this type of stuff. And, and we've been talking about facilities forever. I've been on the board for six months, and it's almost all that we've talked about. And I, for one, would like to, I know once we decide on something, then you gotta fight like crazy to do what we can to get it passed, but it's certainly not the only thing that's important in this school district. If it were, we wouldn't need a school board, so.
Tony, I wanna go back to your first comment and take it one step further. You said you want assurances. What I would like to do is have our group, however we can do this legally, go view some renovated-to-new building. Dallas gave me a list, although they happen to be up in Kettering and Dayton, and I saw them firsthand, but it seems to me our group ought to go take a look at these so that we have the confidence to be able to go to our community and say, yes, renovate-to-new is renovate-to-new, it's not just paint over cinder block walls. Dallas, can that be arranged?
Sure.
I would be as interested or more interested in actually seeing plans and renderings and of what we plan to do here, because we can look at what's renovate, I still don't buy the term renovate-to-new. Renovation is renovation, new is new. Renovate to buildings, I mean, comparing what we're gonna do to somebody else, I'm not sure we can do that because we have a certain amount of money to do a certain amount of things. I know there are some beautiful renovations, Randy, and I don't mind looking at more of them, but I'd like to see sort of what we're gonna buy with the money. I would have a better comfort level if I could see what our renovations are gonna look like.
What I would encourage...
If we took a look at some, I'd wanna know what amount of money that they spent on them, because I think Julie raised a really good point. If you, you know, spend a very small amount of money, it could be just purely cosmetic at best, but if you spend more money, and that's the thought that I thought that we were gonna be doing, we're in that range, that you get to more of the, what we'll call it, renovate-to-new at the end result. So, if we go and take a look at these, I would definitely wanna know, how much money did they spend on them, and what was the range?
Look, you can go ahead and look at these buildings, and I think that's a wonderful idea. We get them set up, and we'll go ahead and do that. But what I would really encourage each of you to do, if you've got the interest, as you say you do, is sit down with Joe Kunkel and walk through his scope of work. Now, I will tell you, when I did it, it was a real experience. The entire process is completely different than I envisioned, given the stage where we are. There are various areas where we know there's some work, we compare that to what the OFCC is requiring versus where we already have done a certain amount of work ourself. And Joe went through with us the Air Elementary as an example. And you can see where the differences are on OFCC, but, for instance, at Turpin, we're spending considerably more on general finishing at Turpin than we are under the OFCC standard because the needs are different there. And that number, I think it was $9.1 million, if I recall correctly, and I asked the question to Joe, what's the science behind the 9.1? How did you come up with this estimate? And I don't remember the answer. And it has something to do with the cost per square foot for new construction versus renovated construction for a building of this type. It's not a line-item estimate because we're not that far along. We haven't, we haven't designed all of the buildings. Instead, what we've done is, at each building, we've taken general categories of areas that they need work and a determination of how much work and bigger-picture category estimates for that work. But there's a science behind it that I can't explain, but I know Joe can, and I would encourage you guys to sit down with him and do it. And we can go out and look at buildings, but Julie, you're exactly right, going out and looking at what this school over here did and what it looks like now or the before and after, we may have a completely different situation. In fact, in our own district, the renovations at Air and Sherwood, which are identical schools, versus Maddox and Summit, it's a completely different fix. So, sit down with Joe, that's where you'll learn more.
What's our next step here?
Procedurally, we have a meeting on Monday at 5:30, and what we need to do, and this doesn't lock us into anything, we need to ask Rick to bring to the meeting resolutions of necessity, and even if we pass resolution of necessity, that doesn't still lock us into anything. It's not until July 21st when we decide, if we decide, to go forward with the resolution to proceed. But we have to tell Rick what resolutions we'd like him to bring to us for consideration at the Monday meeting. I believe, based on the discussions we've had, there's four resolutions of necessity we ought to be looking at. And this is where, Rick, you send them to the Department of Taxation, and they, or, is it the Treasurer? The Treasurer, and they certify the numbers. We need the $98 million with and without a half mil PI as a resolution, and then $103 with and without the half mil PI. And the reason that I'm suggesting we do the initial $5 million for the $103 is so that we can consider, and maybe we'll have John do this additional survey for us, we can consider adding some learning environments for all-day kindergarten, not for throughout the entire district, not for everyone, it's not a number that we could afford, but something so that we have the facilities available to offer it if we decide to offer it at some time while we're making these renovations. Before we can decide to move forward with all-day kindergarten, we've gotta look at the operational cost of those two, but at least if we add some facilities for it, if that's something the community seems to be interested in, we'll have the option to do it at some greater or lesser degree at some point. Those are the resolutions I think we ought to ask Rick to bring to us on Monday. And not the $173 because it doesn't have legs.
I support those four. I know your plan, I'm not giving a vote tonight, but I support those four.
We wouldn't take a vote. All, we're just talking about...
But I need a vote to ask Rick for them, that's what I meant.
I don't think that requires a vote either, does it, Rick?
I don't think so either, but I just wanted to comment, I support those four.
But I am interested in whether any of the other board members would suggest something different than that.
The only move sent for me right now, Jim, is the, and it hadn't even occurred to me until you mentioned it, so, but I was part of me in favor of it when you mentioned the independent verification. I just think, I just think on any construction project, that's a good thing to do, on public construction projects, a really good thing to do, and it gives us, no matter what happens, as we move forward, it gives so much more credibility to whatever we do. It's just added credibility. It's no, like I said, no reflection on Joe. Joe, you seem like a great guy, a competent guy, it's just, it's our due diligence.
I've got a couple names, and we're gonna follow up with them. I do know, it's, actually, a mutual friend of ours had somebody call me, I think they left a message for me this morning, and I haven't had a chance, so, there was a name. We got a name from somebody else that we can follow up.
And I would be happy to be involved in those discussions, as I would've been happy to come today, but I only found out about it yesterday. So, I would, I would love to meet with you, Joe, but it shouldn't be, if there's another board member, two of us can meet with you at a time, I think that would be wise. It'll help me a lot, I know it will. More information I have, the more I'm helped.
All right, but the question is, what's next? We need to ask Rick for resolutions of necessity so that we can continue to at least stay on path for something. Again, it doesn't lock us into anything.
I think those are, that's where we are now. It's, the advantage of doing this the way we've done it is, you know, as the stones come up, we've turned them over, and we've done this all here. We're getting to the point, and I think we all realize that, where we're gonna not make friends. That's the nature of what we do. The only way that we can keep everyone somewhat happy with us is truly to do nothing, but then everyone's actually kind of not happy because we're not doing anything. But we're not doing anything against them, just we're not doing anything. So, so, we're to that point, and that's, I mean, this is why we're here, is to do this, is to, you know, eventually, and we're doing, due diligence, I mean, we're doing it, more than any time ever, and we're working our way there, and that's, and as things come up, I mean, I think we've been addressing them as we go along, and that's wonderful. We gotta keep marching, though. I mean, there's, we've talked about all the reasons why this is the time, and why this is, and the time is nigh, so.
Well, I don't wanna dictate the resolutions of necessity. I have suggested four. Is there anybody that would suggest something different?
I said a couple minutes ago, I support those four.
Hearing nothing else, Rick, would you please bring those resolutions to us on Monday?
Correct, and just so we're clear, it's actually, it'll be six sets of resolutions. There's a lot of compliance related to not just the resolution of necessity, there's one that allows us to go above 4% and below 9%, verifying the maximum maturity. What we did with the plans is we broke down the useful lives of each plan at each building in order to create the length of the term of the bonds, so there's, you know, bottom line is, we'll try to consent up together.
Keep us legal house that.
That won't be a no problem.
Chris, Joel, you bring those resolutions to us when?
Monday.
And what do we do on Monday?
Approve them, hopefully, and at that point, at that point, we would really turn them over to Brad Rui from Pec Schaefer, who would then distribute them to the Department of Taxation, Hamilton County, and Department of Education, kind of get us where we need to go. We will get back from Hamilton County within a week to 10 days, the money side, millage side of that request for the four resolutions of necessity that are being proposed. And the, I guess, a step to consider is to have a meeting mid-July, it's been talked about, to look at those numbers of those four and either make a decision then, narrow it down, or just process it and be ready for that, the 21st of July to say, this is the one, if there is one, we gotta go with one. There can only be one that goes forward.
So, this is just the resolution of necessity vote, this is not the final vote about whether the place is on the ballot?
That will be the 21st.
That's the 21st.
Well, it'll be the 21st, but here was my thought, the resolutions of necessity, we could do a dozen of them. All they really do is keep options open for us, so what we're doing is, we have to send these to the Treasurer, and they have to do some work and send us numbers back. If we don't do a resolution of necessity for a certain option, it's off the table because we missed the window to do it. So, that's why we're gonna do four.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that when we actually crank the numbers, we're at 8.6% with $103, so we really can't go above 103, and 98 was the basement of the con, so, we can do any number, but I would say it'd be between 98 and 103.
That's right. I wasn't suggesting we can go above 9%.
So, I just wanna make sure, we're at 8.7% of our net indebtedness at 103, which we could not exceed 9%.
Okay, so, as I am still processing and learning and understanding and inquiring, I am not committed, committing myself to anything until the 21st.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Or are we, any of us?
But what we're gonna want, what I thought we should do is, we've got our meeting on Monday, the 21st, is that, that's 23rd? 23rd, where we'll move forward with the resolutions of necessity, which don't lock us into anything. And I do think we ought to meet on July 14th, the day we kept open, so that we can get the numbers to come back, have some further discussion, so that we're not, and have the community have the opportunity to hear that discussion, so that we can vet those numbers and any further discussion we need on that, so that on the 21st, when we have to decide on something, we have already had the discussion and an opportunity to think about it before being forced to vote on it at the regular meeting on the 21st. I think that meeting on the 14th is something we ought to do.
And the 21st, just so we're really clear, that is a pretty hard deadline, decisions need to be made, we have a week then to get everything to where they need to be, and that's why the 28th was moved to the 21st because it'd be the next day. So, the 21st would be... that's why the 28th was moved to 21st because it'd be the next day. So, 21st would be, it's possible to have a special meeting, you know, another one after that, but it wasn't recommended. That, they, they preferred to have that week to make sure, because that is, that's the ballot issue. That's the language, and that's the, the issue, um, exactly as it's listed on that resolution to proceed, if we move that, in that direction.
And, and we're scheduled for the 21st, uh, 23rd, Monday, the 23rd at 5:30. And, um, I suspect we'll have more discussion about these issues during that hour and a half, if that's what it takes, before a regular meeting at 7:00. We'll do the resolutions of necessity at the 7 o'clock meeting. We'll have more opportunity to discuss this.
Um, since Joe is here, he could be here at 5:30 on Monday?
Yes.
And then he could be, share a little bit more in regards to-
The staging.
The staging. We could talk about staging. We could talk about, as you heard today, some of the, you know, the different conceptual models and those types of things.
Okay. That would, if you're available, I think that'd be great.
23rd, correct.
Monday.
Monday.
Um, other discussion? It's only 10 o'clock. We've got another couple hours. Um, if not, we still do have, um, our opportunity for public commentary. Is any, anything else for the good of the order here? Um, as, as you all know, this is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. Uh, we do opportu, welcome the opportunity for public commentary. Uh, I have one green card unless there's, and others that have been turned in since then? No? Um, all right. Donna Lover?
Welcome, Donna.
Hi. I wasn't really going to plan on speaking tonight, but I, on my way in, felt a little impelled to do so. And as the time's gone quite rapidly, I'll make it quick. Uh, first thing I want to make sure I do is thank all of you, and Joe, and John, um, on our facilities committees, and as we've been working together in Dallas and so forth. And honestly, from someone who sat in this audience, probably, I'm trying to look around here, maybe more so than some others, but maybe Forrest, through the last 12 or 14 years, this is a very hard job. And I've seen our facilities meetings and committees and been involved with those things and the Lovies, and it's a lot, a lot of work. Um, I've had the privilege to teach in three of our buildings, Turpin, Nagle, and Anderson now. And those were my choices to make those kinds of changes, and I'm very pleased with that because it gives me a very good perspective. Um, some of you may or may not know, I have the great privilege of being the president of our Teachers Association, which is, uh, does a great job. I always hear, you know, positive thing about our educators, which is outstanding. Um, with that being said, I think one of my great privileges that I get to do is get to see and be around in all the buildings and listen. And that's really the most important thing I need to do, is hear what people are saying and watching. And every day, what I usually see are amazing people doing great things with kids, regardless of some of the facilities. Um, one of the things, though, that's disheartening to me is that aspect, when you see children, um, and especially kids, who I feel like could need and deserve a lot better atmosphere. Uh, with the decisions that are being presented and going forward and looking at different things, what I'd like to ask of us to do is work together. The last time I was up here, Dallas and I spoke, in November of 2013. So, for me to come up is not a common practice. But at this stage of it, I kind of feel like one of the things I'd like to do, and I heard Julie mention it, I think, uh, Randy, and one of the things Forrest, you said tonight that kind of struck me, and I think about a lot, it's the ability to risk failure is what leads to success. Sitting back and doing nothing correct, stagnus, you know, can be there. The changes, however, also can be difficult in trying on people. Um, I like to see us work collectively and talk openly a little bit about those advancements and our educational purposes as well. But also, as we go forward, I really want to make sure that I start August with a plan that's going to be good for now. Success, it says, you know, we keep talking about success for all students, but I also see the inequalities. And I want to make sure that we're addressing those currently as quickly. But we don't want to say Band-Aid to our public, but to get me through until something else happens, I'd really like to see us do something more for our students, whether it's facilities and making sure that they're clean and that they're safer, and that they have the adequately, you know, so kids in different buildings. I, you know, I went to Maddox just before school was out, and it was hard, mentioning for me to watch those kids. I mean, it's hot, you know? These are little kids. And those are tough situations. And teachers, I want them focusing on creating amazing, good lessons, not planning their lesson plans according to the weather. Now, unfortunately, this year, in some aspects, I did that. I had to. I didn't have a choice. I've been in facilities where I had, didn't necessarily see that, but now that I've had to see it, I am. And we need to be focusing on common core, common aspects, testing, different app, you know, opportunities, advancement of students' learning. And I need to make sure that I can walk in in August, and I want all of our teachers to walk in in August, knowing that the board is behind them, looking for, we have those. That'll be time regardless of what happens. It'll take time. And so, walking in, I'm going to ask us to work together, come up with some really smart ways to cool it off, to clean it up, give it the best we can, but be honest with our community, too. Um, we do an outstanding job communicating, excuse me, communicating the positive. And I'm not saying I am not an optimistic on that, but also being realistic and being honest. There are inequalities in classrooms, in spaces. And we also have to be very honest with ourselves, with our own district, and looking at what we need to be doing for the advancement of our teaching, as far as the common core, the highest learning standards, all those different things. We got, you know, I know here in Central Office, we need help. I mean, we've got to get people out there doing the right things for our kids and moving us forward. The facilities can stay there, and I, you know, I liked the one comment that I read tonight where somebody said, you know, it's not the facilities, it's what happens. And I, I can believe that, but it sure would be even more positive if we can move in some better directions. I'm going to offer up, um, the association's behalf, we're really good at doing surveys quickly and fast, um, and also open-minded to speaking to, you know, more directly and making sure that we're working with a plan. I'd love to see us go in with a plan, uh, to start August in a nice situation. Um, the trailers are going to be here for a while, regardless. Thank you.
Do you have a Love Card?
Hi, Karen Merhafer. Um, I just had a couple of comments, I think, towards things that were said tonight. Um, my husband doesn't even know where the heck I am, so I do have to get home as well. I do appreciate everything that you guys have done. As I've said to people out there, you do not get up every day and say, how can I screw this district over? You are out there to try to figure out what's going to be best for this community. And you've done a tremendous job of getting the information from the community to find out what it is we want. You have 107 million dollars because the big plan is not in our future. I think it, you know, that's definitely off the table. Personally, I'm happy about that. Um, so you have the 107 million dollars, so you need to figure out how, what you're going to do with that. I, I wanted to address the teacher comment. I actually feel that the teachers have had an opportunity to give their opinion. If they live in this district, I am sure that they went online, that's anonymous, or took, or maybe they got a call from the, from the district, and had the opportunity to vote as to what they thought was the best thing for the district. And if they don't live in the district, quite honestly, yes, their ideas are welcomed, but they're not the ones paying for them. It's, it's the teachers that live here, work here, those are the ones that really count. When we first moved here in 1985, we lived here for one year, I bought a house and we were in the Newtown School District. I made the mistake, I thought, of not looking at that building before I bought the house. I went and saw the building, and I thought, oh my God, what was I thinking? I should have gone and looked at this building. It's dilapidated. I, I don't, I can't imagine putting my kids there. When we left a year later and went to Michigan, to a wonderful, wonderful school district, we had a better education here in Newtown. It was not the building. It was the teachers that were in it. My kids were way far ahead of where the kids in Michigan, where we paid, I believe it was four times the taxes to educate our students. And the education was better here. So, I would look at, we, you know, we kind of disregarded Newtown. Wasn't you guys. It was a totally different board, of course. The Newtown School was tossed aside. Miami Valley Christian went in there. They renovated to new, I believe. I think they're doing a great job educating their people, their kids. Their parents are extremely happy with the facility, and I, I don't know what their cost was, but I bet you it wasn't too great, because they had to raise their money themselves, and they didn't, weren't getting it from the, from the taxes. Um, so I guess my question is, how long are you willing to wait to look at more plans? I, I think the majority of you are not. But to keep kicking this, like Dallas says, to keep kicking this can down the road is silly. Wilson has got to be replaced. Anderson needs to be looked at. Turpin has things that have to be done. And of course, the other, the other schools as well. Now, maybe some of the other elementary schools could hold on. I don't know. I haven't been in them. But I have been in Mercer. I've been in Turpin. I've been in Anderson. I don't, I've barely been in Wilson. I didn't have kids there. But as, um, as a citizen of the community, I know that it's in really bad shape. That gym is horrendous. The fact that you have to walk outside to get to that gym is ridiculous. The, the trailers, how is that safe? So, you, we need to move on. We can't keep coming up with more and more plans and do more and more studies. We've done the studies. We did, I think that you did an excellent, excellent job. And, um, I'm very impressed. And my husband is in marketing, and he, and he would tell you, I think, that you have to win the market. You've got the plan. You know what the, what the community wants. Now you have to go forth and win with that plan. I don't know how much more information you could possibly need.
Thank you. All right. It's, uh, it's late. Um, we thank everybody so very much for coming. Uh, we do appreciate it. As we move forward, um, whatever we decide to do, everybody is entitled to their opinion. Um, there's no wrong opinions. Everybody has the best interests of the district in mind. And whether we agree or not, I hope we all will be respectful of everybody else's opinions, um, when we read the articles in the Forest Hills Journal.
Are you okay, Daddy?
I, I hope we'll focus on the, the merits of each other's positions and not attack the, the people themselves. Um, thank you all for coming. Our next meeting is Monday. That'll be the work session followed by the regular scheduled meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Tapfer?
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Helmigan.
Yes.
Mr. Frumming. Yes. Thank you, Randy.
And thank you for your patience in allowing me to participate this way. Thank you.
See ya.
Good night.
Thank you.